Hello, everybody. January 30, 2023, the City Council Committee on Public Health, Safety and Environment co-posted with the Committee of the Whole will meet on Thursday, March 2, 2023, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing the issue on noise pollution, particularly car stereo and motorcycle noise, and any potential actions that may be able to be taken to help mitigate the issues in Salem. In person in the City Council chambers, 93 Washington Street, second floor, via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Act of 2022. In-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, and the public will may also participate, listen, in or view this meeting while in progress via remote participation platform Zoom through many of the following ways. Members of the public and/or parties with the right or requirement to attend this meeting may access to remote participation we need through any of the following ways. Please click the joint below on the webinar, password 889466, or telephone 8535257 toll-free, or 8884754499, webinar ID 82441482988. All right, so, and obviously persons requiring auxiliary aids, that was handled. All right, so for the agenda tonight, the issue of noise pollution, particularly car stereo and motorcycle noise, and any potential actions that may be taken to help mitigate the issue in Salem. Tonight, from the committee, we have Councillors Watson Felth, Councillor Merkel, Councillor Cohen, absent Councillor McLean, and then from the Committee of the Whole, we have Councillors Marcello and Councillor Prozinski. So, with that, we also have a couple of attendees tonight. We have our city solicitor Beth Renaud, we have our health agent David Greenbaum, and we also have Lieutenant Tucker from the Salem Police Department and Captain Burke, thank you, Captain John Burke, correct? Thank you, thank you, councillor. So with that, we're here to talk about noise, mostly, I guess, affected the downtown, and with that, I'm going to let Councillor Watson Felth explain why you brought in this order. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Verella. So for starters, I want to remind folks who go way back in our brains to the end of last summer and early fall when this conversation started. A request was brought forward to the council through me as the Ward Two councillor from residents who are here with us tonight, actually, who raised this relatively serious concern, and they went even a step further. So I will say that, you know, noise pollution complaints, as we all know, are ongoing across various parts of Salem, specifically in the downtown, ongoing, sort of mostly in the warmer months, but also, obviously, year-round, given the traffic that we have passing through Salem. But this group of residents actually made a very specific request that we take this up and discuss it in council, and it's my, I'm of the mind that generally, that's our job. So I wanted to thank them for making that very specific request and bringing this to our attention. It has started a number of really constructive conversations behind the scenes, which I know we're going to talk a little bit more about tonight. But it's also, I think, opened the opportunity for other residents to express their stories as well. So I know we've got a couple of emails that came in about this, and I think it's probably going to be the start of an ongoing conversation that's really important to have. I think it's, I want to speak to the timing a little bit. I think it was, you know, this was brought forward during the warmer months, but I think having this conversation now in the winter is actually a perfect time so that we can hopefully enact whatever we'd like to enact in time to give some relief to the residents when those windows open up again this spring. We'll see. I think that we all, anyone who has expressed or experienced, you know, noise pollution in their neighborhood knows that it can be jarring, it can be shocking, especially it can cause ongoing stress when the noise is just sustained over a duration of time. There's a lot of different kinds of noise that can cause this kind of distress to their quality of life. Specifically tonight, we're talking about engines and music stereos, but I do think that this is a broader conversation. I know historically, there's been some difficulty with enforcing our noise ordinance in town because you have to kind of report it and get it addressed in real time, because, you know, even just the change of 10 minutes can, you know, the noise has passed, and so the behavior just continues. I'm looking forward to having a conversation tonight about different, various ways we can, you know, communicate broadly to people who come to this town or who live here through some sort of public awareness campaign, as well as some potential legal action that we can, we can take. I think that's all I was going to say. I had one more thing, but we'll come back to it. So, but, so thanks for taking this up tonight, Chair.
Awesome, thank you, Councillor Watson Felth. Let the record show that Councillor McLean has joined us. So, a couple of things before we open it up. I definitely looked into this, and I couldn't help myself to see how we could possibly fix this problem and what has been done in the past. And after talking to our city solicitor about what avenues we can take concerning mitigating noise violations in our city, you know, before I talk about that, I do believe that when it comes to noise, especially from engine stereos in the downtown, I completely understand the concern with our downtown residents. This is a quality-of-life issue. And after talking to Chief Miller about this, he did agree that whatever we can do to solve this, I think, is a benefit and positive for everybody. I just really think it's difficult, and I do think it's going to take a lot more than creativity. So with that, I just wanted to give a little background that this has been somewhat discussed in a different way, or the creative way in how we enforce it. So about 11 years ago, Mayor Driscoll did propose a measure called the, I'm going to call it the Red Light Violation Program or Initiative. And this was, you know, it was a great idea. Basically, the idea of people running red lights, a camera will take a picture, then send you an infraction ticket in the mail. However, after speaking with our city solicitor, you know, under Chapter 90, Massachusetts General Laws under Road Enforcement, this is a very difficult thing to do, because how our general laws are written, and I will take note here from our city solicitor, is that it would take special, a special act from the legislature to actually make this big of a change. An officer has to be at the side of the offense to issue a citation. This is how it works in the Commonwealth. But nevertheless, 11 years ago, Salem did file for the special act, and it definitely died either in the, would be the House or the Senate. So this is somewhat the same conversation, and I wanted to bring up that when we talk about getting creative with how we can enforce this, I understand that our police department, they, you know, this, this should be a priority, but health and safety also are priorities of our city. What cities have done, specifically Philadelphia, is they have an initiative. I talked to Councillor Marcus Sequia, and he's the Majority Whip of the City of Philadelphia. They enacted in 2021 an ordinance, basically where you could have a camera attached to a decibel meter, and what this will do is it'll document and cite the motorist for either excessive pipes, excessive noise from a car stereo, and this is going to be implemented in the summer in the City of Philadelphia. I think these are creative ideas, because it's about enforcement, and when you don't have, I mean, when we talk about car stereos and loud pipes, you're talking about you have to catch someone in the act, and that's very difficult to do anywhere. So with that, I thought that was a great idea, but I think our hands are tied with Chapter 90, unless we were possibly looking to enact, enact from the legislature as well, which I think we need to talk about. Salem is very unique. We have, last year, over a million tourists coming to our city, and I think people, you know, they, they treat a place they're visiting a little differently, maybe with a little, not say less respect, but it's a little different. And I think our situation is unique, and we need to make sure we can do all we can to make sure that our residents are, have a peace of mind when it comes to noise. So with that, councillor, who would you like to bring up first to ask questions? Before that, well, Councillor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Verella, and thank you, Councillor Watson Felth, for bringing this up. Ironically, just recently, I've had, I received a letter today from someone who lives on ropes about the noise from the car wash, and, but I've had a lot of recent and not-so-recent communication with people who live on Lafayette Street, and I found out recently that after Highland Ave, Lafayette Street is the most traveled street in Salem, and it's obviously very residential. And one of the conversations I had was that if you live on Lafayette Street, you're going to be confronted with a lot of noise. It could be like 18-wheelers, or, you know, refrigeration trucks, or whatever, but believe it or not, if you, if this, these residents lived one block away, like on Summit Ave, the noise level is significantly less. So I don't have an answer, I just wanted to mention that. I think the main corridors where there's residential can be very difficult, because those are where people tend to have larger trucks, or motorcycles, or souped-up, you know, scooters, or whatever, and contribute to the noise. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Councillor Cohen. Councillor Watson Felth?
Thank you, Chair. Before we call up some of our guests, I just wanted to sort of piggyback on what Councillor Cohen just said, because I think he's absolutely right. The combination of streets like, you know, Lafayette, Highland Canal really bring people through Salem in large part as well. We have a lot of folks from Marblehead who come through Salem, maybe they're using the MBTA, maybe they're going somewhere else, but Salem tends to be a place people drive from, from one end all the way to the other, right? And I think in addition to that, you made a fair, a really excellent point, that I think people cutting through Salem, or, or even people who come to visit here, they just don't have that same, the stakes are different for them, right? They don't have the stakes, the same commitment level to be good neighbors. And so I think, I think we really feel that in the, you know, downtown, especially in, you know, I think in the downtown particularly, although, you know, Councillor Cohen made an excellent point that this is a problem even outside the downtown. I think where the buildings are right flush up on the sidewalk, right? If you're on the second floor in a downtown apartment and you open your window, I mean, there are people like outside your door, and so, and so is the traffic. So I think it's, it just really does sort of all crescendo, you know, to make a, to make a sound pun, wink, wink. So I'm really, just, just saying, I think, I think he's absolutely right. Okay, so I think it sounds like, I would love to ask Dave Greenbaum if we could start with him, if you're okay with that, Chair?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Greenbaum.
Do you want to start, or do you want me to start?
You can start.
Okay. Hi, Mr. Greenbaum, thank you for being here tonight.
My pleasure.
I appreciate you taking the time. You're just going to make sure that that microphone's right up in your face, yeah.
All right, I'll move over. Is that better?
You are definitely not violating any noise ordinances presently.
Not today, maybe later.
Mr. Greenbaum, thank you for being with us tonight. I guess my, my question really comes down to a couple of things for the Health Department. One is sort of how do you, you know, rate this as a relatively serious problem in the downtown, a quality-of-life issue from a health perspective? And then also, what do you think is, is, you know, what have you seen be successful with regards to enforcement, or how to manage this on an ongoing basis, if you're able to speak to that?
So it's clearly a problem. I agree with you in that respect. Unfortunately, from a health perspective, it's not something that we can enforce. We don't enforce these temporary noises like a car stereo, or a motorcycle going by, or things like that. We in the Health Department enforce the Mass DEP air pollution regulation, which in it, they talk about noise as air pollution, and that is stationary noises of sufficient sound and, or sufficient level and duration. So Councillor Cohen mentioned the, what, the car wash, we got that same complaint today. We've actually been dealing with that complaint quite extensively, and somebody from my office did go to DEP, got a sound meter, and we're going to go out and take sound meter readings for that specifically. And we've done it for rather stationary-type noises. Unfortunately, the noises that you're talking about really don't fall under our purview, they're more, I'm going to throw my police friends over here under the bus, it's really more disturbing the peace, and it falls under them.
Can you speak at all to the effects of noise pollution over time on, on people from a quality-of-life perspective? Are you able to speak to that, the effects?
I could say generally that it's stressful. I mean, I used to live in, I lived in Lynn for 10 years, I don't live there anymore, and part of the reason I don't live there anymore is because I lived on a busy street, and I could hear the fire trucks going by at all hours of the night, and having young children at the time, I didn't want that, so I moved to the country. And I know that's not an option for everybody, but that was my decision.
I think it's fascinating that you, that you mentioned the sort of sustained, ongoing issue from a stationary perspective. Do you know of any major areas where that's a key, a key issue in the, sort of in the B5 or in the downtown area?
Not off the top of my head. I mean, the closest one is that car wash, so, but we've dealt with other ones. Trying to think, we had another noise complaint not that long ago. It was the Napa Auto Pots, the exhaust vent from that, and we, we worked to try and get that addressed. I know years ago, we dealt with the air conditioning unit over at the storage facility on the corner of Bridge and Boston Street. So we've dealt with a number of them over the years, and we try to address them. And just bear in mind that the DEP regulation says that for it to be a violation has to be 10 decibels over ambient. So, well, if it's nine and a half decibels, it's not a violation. It still may annoy somebody, but it's not a violation that we can address. So it has to reach that 10-decibel level for us to take action.
And how does that correlate to the noise ordinance decibel limits?
I couldn't say, honestly, I don't know.
Okay. I'm good.
Councillor Cohen?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I do have another example, which happened in my ward, that the Health Department was really helpful with. There were maybe five or six different people complaining about noise coming from a house on Linden Street. They couldn't sleep, they couldn't work during the day, and, and I want to give credit to the Health Department, they went out and borrowed a meter and found out it was like, like, again, like an HVAC unit, and they gave the property owner like a certain amount of time to fix it, and I believe it was like fixed within 24 hours. And, but that was really like the only way we knew about it is from residents contacting us, and then I contacted the health agent, or one of the people who works with you. But I just wanted to say that's another stationary issue that you guys dealt with.
Councillor Watson Felth?
Thanks, I appreciate that, Chair. I have one more follow-up question, just based on what Councillor Cohen just shared. So would, would the, would sort of mechanics fall under your, under your purview then if there was someone who was fixing an engine and it was running for 20 minutes on, you know, right on the other side of somebody's fence or something?
It depends on what the engine is. Now, if you're talking about an idling truck or something like that, that shouldn't be happening anyway. You know, the EPA puts out air pollution regulations that prohibit idling over a certain period of time, and it would depend on what the noise is. You know, we'd have to take that complaint and investigate it and see if it's something that we could actually enforce.
I appreciate this conversation, just a point of personal privilege here. You know, I, my home abuts a place that is not supposed to be fixing vehicles, but often does, or did for many years. And I think there's this sense that you just bought, you know, you, you live where you live, and you chose to be there, and you need to just accept it. And I think that sometimes there's a little bit of that, too, in this conversation with downtown residents, where it's like, look, you moved into the heart of the B5, what do you expect? But I think what I really appreciate about this conversation and what you've shared is that I think we're all saying that we agree that there is a limit, right? That there, that there is reasonable expectations of quality of life, even if you live in the heart of a downtown. So thanks, thanks for sharing that.
My pleasure.
Councillor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Verella, and thank you. It is, it's interesting to know about the Health Department's enforcement, if it's like an ongoing noise as opposed to a temporary one. We had, as councillors, or at least some of us, had received an email today about the noise and air pollution effect of leaf blowers, particularly if they're gas. Does that fall under something, you know, you regulate, and do we have, you know, different regulations for gas or electric? If you could, if you have any information about that, thank you.
So you're probably not going to like my answer, but I can tell you that the DEP regulation specifically excludes those types of equipment, leaf blowers, lawn mowers, snow blowers, things like that. So we couldn't do that. Now, is that to say there couldn't be a local ordinance or regulation to be put in place? It's possible, I know other communities have done it.
Okay, so we don't have anything in place, because you said, what was it, the state that doesn't have anything?
The, the DEP doesn't.
Oh, the DEP, okay.
Their regulation excludes.
Excludes it, the DEP?
Or exempts those, yes.
Excludes.
And we don't have a local regulation, no.
Okay, so the DEP excludes blowers, and we don't have any local regulation on that. But is there also just general decimal levels of noise that anything can violate, that?
Not in the regulations that we enforce. It has to, it has to be stationary of a, of a, a limit high enough to cause a nuisance, and for a duration long enough to disturb someone.
Oh, thank you.
So like a passing vehicle, or passing motorcycle wouldn't, wouldn't meet that definition.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful to know.
Okay, with that, thank you, oh, oh, Councillor Marcello.
I can't let this go, thank you, Chair. Do you know what else the DEP excludes?
Off the top of my head, I don't, but there's a, it's a list of things, yeah.
Okay.
Well, you know what, I can tell you, it excludes police and emergency vehicles, fire trucks, parades.
Construction, I would imagine, construction noise?
I don't, I don't think construction was specifically spelled out in the regulation when I looked. So, you know, depending upon what it is they're doing and the hours of operation, it, it may be okay, but, for instance, rock crushing, I know you, we dealt with the rock crushing up there off of Highland Ave last year, or the year before, and we did some extensive work to try and get that rectified, and it took a little bit of time, but I think it did get straightened out.
Okay, and one more thing about the ambient noise, is that calculated at the time that the test is done, or is it a daytime ambient noise, which I would think would be different than nighttime?
So we try to do it when the, it's having the most impact. I've been out at midnight taking sound meter readings in the past.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, with that, thank you, Mr. Greenbaum. At this time, I'd like to invite Officers Burke and Tucker up here. I have a lot of questions for you guys, thank you, David. All right, thank you, gentlemen. So yes, we have a lot to talk about with this, and I guess my first question before I hand to the council is, you know, with our current noise ordinance and concerning enforcement from the police department, I guess, how much of a priority is enforcement of noise concerning vehicles, stereos? You know, I know there's, you know, this is a, should, is a priority, but however, I think other things concerning health and safety are also priorities. So with that, you know, where do you guys stand on this?
Well, basically, it's a priority unless something supersedes it in the moment, but, you know, it's something that we receive complaints on regularly, that we respond to and deal with. You know, we can do, some of our options are to do more selective enforcement of these types of things. With the good weather coming, we can do, just to let the officers know, pay more attention to, be a little more proactive to some of these loud noises from vehicles and whatnot, to issue warnings or citations to try to curb the behavior. But also, we, we get complaints, and we respond to those as they come in.
Thank you. Councillor Watson Felth?
Thanks, Chair. I just want to, so my perspective, and I think based on some past conversations I've had with, with, I know you, Lieutenant Tucker, and also with the chief, is that the, our current noise ordinance is just so, can be very, I don't want to put words in your mouth, can be very frustrating to try and enforce in real time, because it matches both the exact moment and that decibel reading requirement in real time, which can be so difficult to catch, right? Between the person making the phone call, the person getting the phone call, the person sending out, an officer, an officer having to leave wherever they are and get there, and then catch it, right? So I would, I guess I'm asking, yeah, do we, we need to fix this, right? Do you guys feel the same way?
Well, when it comes to, I'll speak about dwellings first. When it comes to a loud stereo, a loud party, that's not something that we typically proactively address, unless it's, you know, sometimes you drive by a party and it's really raging, and you have to say, all right, this isn't, this is going to cause a complaint, so you deal with it. More often than not, you receive a complaint about a stereo, or a loud group, or gathering, and you go and you deal with it and end it. That being said, the standard that we, that we live by, and not just about noise ordinances, is reasonableness, so we have to say, what would a reasonable person feel about this noise? So sometimes we get a complaint, and it's, the complaint itself might be a little bit unreasonable, if it's the afternoon, and someone has their radio up a little bit, and we go, we say, well, you know, a reasonable person wouldn't find this to be too loud. That's, that's a rare case, but, but when we get there, we have to, we have to be the reasonable person and say, all right, this is too loud, given the time of day, you know, the day of the week, all those different factors. So that's really the standard. It's not, it's not even a set decibel, we don't, we don't have a policy of measuring the, the noise, because at, you know, at 10:00 PM, you might get a verbal warning, hey, keep everybody quiet, you know, turn down your radio. At 2:00 AM, at 3:00 AM, all right, turn the radio off, everybody has to leave. So it's, it's very subjective, but again, back to the reasonableness. With vehicles, it's, you know, they're mobile, so it tends to be a fleeting thing, so that's where we have to be a little more proactive. But sometimes, you know, a group will go down the willows and hang around and play their stereos, or, or drive around in circles, and we can go down and, and find that group and deal with them. So there's, there are some times when we can react. But typically, if a motorcycle races down the street, unless it's going to come back, it's hard to, it's hard to respond to a complaint about that. We can, we can go down and see if they're still around, and maybe, maybe they do come back, and we can catch them at it, but.
I think, yeah, if I may, thank you. I think that's exactly, like, that is exactly the case that we're talking about, right? You know, I live right off Bridge Street, it is not uncommon for, you know, one of those motorcycles with the illegally loud engines to just go flying at 50 miles or more down the middle of Bridge Street at 9 o'clock at night. It wakes everybody up, you know, it wakes our kids up. And, and I think, until Mr. Finger brought this forward, I kind of think to myself, well, I guess that's my life. But I think if there is a better way to handle this, if there is a way to capture that moment and, and enforce that moment, then we need, I think we really need to do it. It's, it's a major issue. Have you heard, you know, Councillor Verella will talk a lot about some of the community research that he's done, but have you heard of other cities and towns that are doing this, you know, nationally, that, where this has worked? Is there any data you're aware of?
I'm not aware of any, anything that's been tested. The other concern is, does it stand up in court? Does it stand up under appeal? That's the problem we've had with the red light cameras, speed cameras are suffering the same fate right now, they're, they're at the state level. Does it look like, does any movement there? And that's, that's kind of tradition, but it's also kind of like the rules of evidence, like, you know, the state wants you to catch the person speeding, identify them, issue a citation, or catch them with their loud stereo, their loud pipes, and issue them a citation. Some of the shortcomings, as you can imagine, if, you know, if it was a sound-based, or a sound and video-based system... Some of the shortcomings, as you can imagine, if, you know, if it was a sound-based or a sound and video-based system, was it that vehicle? Was it another vehicle? Was that person driving, you know, was, was the owner the one behind the wheel? Who are you, who are you going to cite for that? With, you know, with, with an exhaust, I guess you could cite the owner, but that would really be the only, you know, that'd be an equipment violation. But aside from that, with moving violations, you really want to cite the operator, not the owner. So I, I don't know where it stands in this state in particular. Really, our traditional approach, and I, I'm not aware of a better one at the moment. Maybe technology will come along. Our traditional approach has been, if we're getting complaints about a certain type of behavior, a certain type of noise, we'll do extra enforcement in that area. And the hope is, other people see the blue lights, they see all the traffic stops. The people who get stopped, you know, tell their friends. And word gets out that we're not going to tolerate certain noise and certain behavior.
To that point, have you ever heard of or seen any sort of public awareness campaign around this? Like, you will be violating, you know, if you're violating, you will be stopped, you will be ticketed, you will be. Have you seen that in other communities and has it been effective?
There's been different campaigns, you know, around seatbelt use. There's, there's motorcycle signs. You see both sides of that issue with check twice, save a life motorcycle signs. Then you, the other side is loud pipe, save lives. But we're not supporting that one. But, yeah, there's, there's various campaigns with like lawn signs and flyers and outreach. With the hands-free law changes three, three years ago, I think it was three years ago. There were pamphlets that we handed out when we stopped motorists who were using cell phones. So there are education materials, there are some, some campaigns that, that we can undertake. Sometimes at the entrance points of the cities, you'll, you'll see notification signs of, you know, well, we have the speed limit signs. You can also put up some signs about things that you want to crack down on. Engine brakes are one that we need to get some more signs up about, or get some signs up about prohibiting their use. They're, they're prohibited under the city ordinance, the truck brakes that you hear. So we need to make sure the truckers are aware of it to curb their use. And then we can cite the other, the people that do it anyway.
I have one last question, Counselor. Thank you. Sorry, Chair. This one is about, you know, reason, our, our level of reasonable expectation of all of you, given, you know, what your team staffing model is right now. I think it would be wonderful if we could have an officer of the law on a little bike, making sure that they're chasing down everyone at every major intersection in the downtown. But I know that that's not possible. So from where you sit today and what, and, you know, based on the staff that you have today as we, as we walk into budget season coming soon, what, what can you, you know, reasonably, what can we expect? How many folks do you have? What, what kind of, you know, when you say enhanced enforcement, like, what does that actually look like for you all when we're talking about boots on the street?
I took over the traffic unit a few years ago. There were some officers who were reaching the end of their career. And through a combination of factors, the police department staffing dipped down a bit. We have to devote, you know, our priority all the time is patrol, to patrol and react to calls and take emergencies. So the traffic division has suffered a bit, but we are building it back up. We did get another officer on board and we're scheduled to get a fourth officer in that, that division late spring, I believe, once we get some more trained officers out of the academy.
So, no, sorry, thanks. So just to be clear, so that's four officers plus you, or you and three others?
Four plus me will be the complement.
So our entire traffic and parking enforcement division in the Salem Police Department is five officers?
Yes, it will be. And that's not to say that patrol officers also participate in traffic enforcement. So we, we can depend on them to also take this up. And, you know, we'll, we'll make that a priority. When they're not, when they're, back to one of the earlier questions, if they're not committed to something else, they can, they should be on patrol and they can also do disenforcement.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer. I'm all set.
Thank you. It's going to be Counselor Cohen, then Counselor Merkel, then Counselor Marcello.
Thank you, Chair Varela. I know you've been waiting to talk, Captain Burke. So my first line of questioning or comment is for you. So on, on the stationary issue, I think, as, as we know, and Counselor Prozynski and I have talked about this, there's a lot of issues with the university students. In particular, there was, there's a house that's behind the Japanese house that you know of, that I'm aware of 28 unique resident complaints. You know, people throwing air conditioners out the third floor and beer bottles all over the street and people passed out in the street at four in the morning. And Sergeant Andrews came out, met with me and some of the residents, like at two in the afternoon because the landlord had, just to give a specific example, had promised not to rent this multifamily to exclusively the hockey team. And, and literally while we were standing there across the street, there was like 15 cars, you know, people getting in and out with hockey sticks somehow. And the reason I bring this up is because I believe that the university, I know this from something that happened to me, has a code of conduct for students who live off campus. And so my question to you, Captain Burke, is, do you guys interact with the university? Because it doesn't make sense that it would just fall on your department.
So, Counselor, thank you. Yeah, so we do interact with SSU Police Department. They do have a code of conduct. In some respects, with their disciplinary function, like, let's say, the police department, we have a real good relationship. They'll tell us a lot. As far as the administration disciplinary process, many times the information's a one-way street. So we provide them with the information on, on who some of their problem students are, who some of the problem party houses are. We have found it's been a mixed bag over the years, mostly good, though, that they have addressed issues. They generally will not communicate that back to us as far as what actions they took, suspension, expulsion, or, or any of that respect. I will say with the stationary-type noise issues, like college parties, disorderly houses, things of that, in many respects, we probably have it a little bit easier than the traffic guys do with the, with the, kind of the mobile stuff. Because we can kind of start a really good documentation trail. And for us, it's important that, you know, our response when we go out to these locations, that we get a call to the police department when, when this, and this is just particularly speaking about the stationary thing. Is, is we want to get that call because that gets that into the system and that starts that trail. You know, in some, in some instances, someone will, will email me or in many respects, they'll email you folks and they'll call me. And then they'll be like, you know, this issue's been ongoing for a month or two months, it's really bothering us. And then we have to start there at that point, right? We can't really go back, like, because we haven't observed those noise violations, we haven't interacted with them. So we're really starting with there. So we, we ask people, if they can, to call us in the moment when something's happened. And then we can start that trail. Usually with the thing like a college party or a house that there's disturbances and loud music playing. You know, generally, we show a little bit of discretion at first, a warning, turn it down. We'll escalate that up to a, a city noise ordinance violation. And then we have at the, the kind of a last option for us is arrest for disturbing the peace or, or other related type offenses. The documentation's very important. With CIU, so I, I'm involved, he's involved with traffic, I handle the Community Impact Unit. We deal with a lot of that stuff. That's the stuff we want. So the, the problem house that we're talking about, like, you know, I could talk to Sean about that and hopefully they're not renting. Because we will talk to landlords, we will have sit downs, we will try to mediate these things before they rise to that level. You know, it's a, it's, it's a mix. It happens sometimes, some groups of kids are very receptive to us and, and some are not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cohen. I just wanted, before Counselor Merkel, just wanted to restate this meeting is about noise concerning motorcycles and vehicles. Just wanted to wrangle it in here, everybody. So thank you. That, Counselor Merkel.
Oh, I have my second.
Second, thank you, Counselor, Counselor Cohen.
And I know you're on a roll, but I want to bounce back to Lieutenant Tucker, if you don't mind. Thank you. Yeah, and I understand it's about vehicles, but I do feel like we are talking also about general noise issues. I know that we've met with the department about the enhanced bikes and scooters and everything. And I know there was a lot of activity, like on Congress Street, coming up and going down Lafayette Street. I know a lot of these violators don't live in Salem necessarily. And I believe that you guys, and you could correct me, Lieutenant Tucker, were doing some, like, traps on Congress Street or whatever, having more presence down there to try to, you know, get them when they were in the middle of the street or whatever. Because I think it was really scary to people who were just driving around. They were, you know, literally like 10 or 12 of them in the middle of Congress Street, for example. Is that the kind of proactive stuff that you were talking about? Is maybe having someone at specific times be in, in some of the, like, the areas that you know that they frequent?
Right, that's a, that's a good example. That was an issue we've had the past few summers. We expect, hopefully it won't, but we're ready if it returns. That, that's a difficult situation. That one's unique in that they're typically youth, they're not all youth, but they're youthful-minded. And they don't want to stop. So we have to be very cautious because if you've seen on the news, some, you know, sometimes the police chase these, their scooters and dirt bikes and bicycles. But if, if we cause an accident, or if we're, if we're part of an action that results in an accident, injury or fatality, it can be very bad liability-wise. So we have to be careful, but we want to do something. So we've been trying to do more through identification. In one example, one instance on Congress Street, oddly, the scooter had a license plate on it. And they were able to track it down and intercept the individual when he got home. So that was a, that was a good situation. And hopefully, that sends a message to the others that we're not going to tolerate that. But it's become, become something of a phenomenon, like, you're seeing it in all the cities. I saw it firsthand in Boston a few times. It's, it's some kind of a social phenomenon where they feel there's no repercussions and ride around. And it's a little tough. If, a lot of them don't wear helmets, but if they do, identification can be tough. Face coverings, now everyone, you know, as we know, we've been wearing face coverings and it's been the norm. So it's been a little tricky, but we will continue the efforts to that. And that's just one example. You know, if traditionally, as, as we talked earlier about the corridors, like, the busier roads are going to yield more results. Lafayette Street, Bridge Street, Fort Ave, you know, North Street, we can sit on the side street. The, the noise violations are a little easier. You can, you know, you don't have to, it's not a red light, we have to be in view of it or a stop sign. You can hear it and then go get them.
Thank you. Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Varela. In regards to the stops for an enforcement for noise, for, for vehicles, do you generally have a noise decimal reader? Or do you write a violation based on your opinion of it being loud? How often do officers, you know, have, have a decimal reader? And just, just curious on that part of your enforcement? And then, and if that helps it to not get tossed out, if there's something along those signs? Just curious how that works?
There, there are two procedures, depending on which section of Chapter 90 you want to enforce. Under 9016, it's harsh and objectionable noise, and I go back to that reasonableness standard. You know, you, you know, when you hear motorcycle, it's kind of loud, but might be norm, you know, might be a factory motorcycle. Then you hear the, the one that has no buffalo whatsoever and you can hear it across town. Car stereo, you know, a good, a good song turned up a little bit. All right, it doesn't have to be a good song, but, but. Someone who turns it up a little bit and sings along, it might not be an issue. Or you might say, hey, you know, turn it down a little bit. And then you have the ones that, you know, rattle your windows and you can hear it blocks away. That's, those are kind of the obvious ones. We don't, there's really no means to measure that in the moment with a decibel meter. We have decibel meters. We typically use them downtown, you know, you see them at Halloween. We measure street performers and various people using, or some using amplification, some not. We use them for that, and that's kind of more of the static type of situation, like Mr. Greenbaum was referring to. You can use it for that as a, something that's ongoing, but it'd be a little tough to replicate the car stereo. You know, we, we can't measure it in our vehicle as it goes by. We don't have that technology to do that. And then if we pulled them over, they, in most cases, turn it down. And then it wouldn't do any good at that point to try to replicate it.
Thank you, Counselor. I just wanted, before Counselor Marcello, did want to confirm that I did get a chance to look at Chapter 90, Section 16. And it clearly states that it's up to the officer's discretion or a decibel meter. So there's two mechanisms. So thank you for that. Counselor Marcello.
Thank you, Chair. That was, that was most of my question, was how you, how you measure it. So if you don't have to measure it, that stands up in court? If you were to give someone a ticket for, you know. Thank you. Harsh and objectionable noise. And not just you didn't like the song they were playing, like, it's, it feels squishy to me.
It is, but it's really no more, it's no more burden of proof than a, a red light violation or a stop sign. It's, and I'll say, we don't win them all on appeal. We're trying. But it's, it's kind of along those lines. I stopped, no, you didn't, you know, your radio was too loud, no, it wasn't. It's, it's kind of along those lines with it. The court has to rely on the officer's word essentially and their reasonableness. There are, some other sections of 9016 are, you can't alter the exhaust system at all to increase the noise. And that, that goes for cars, motorcycles, anything. So just the alteration itself, if it's louder than other cars that you've heard. And there's some people that modify their exhaust to backfire, you know, on purpose. Those, those in particular, we'd like to write them a ticket. But that, that, the officer's word is what, what carries the weight in that situation.
Okay. I just want to add that an education campaign is great, except you have to have enforcement. And I feel like we are dumping an awful lot on you guys for enforcement between speeding and noise now. I'm really intrigued by the, you know, automatic detection type capability. And something that you said kind of caught my ear because I'm still on it about speed cameras too. Speed cameras and red light cameras, and I want them everywhere. I add some noise, noise meters too. Yes, absolutely. So is Rhode Island, are they fighting them in court? Is it not, are those not holding up? Because that was like the famous.
On the speed.
Providence is like famous for putting up speed cameras and hundreds of tickets in the first week, at least.
I, I couldn't say what the experience has been. I know there were different approaches to the violation. For our proposal in Salem was to just issue a smaller fine that, that didn't quite carry the penalty that a civil citation did through the RMV. I, it may work, the, the sound-based enforcement, automated enforcement. The red light and the speed cameras are more definitive. So if those aren't passing the muster yet in Massachusetts, I'm not sure that the decibel meter will because it's, it's a little less precise in terms of, again, like I said, not, not trying to be the defense attorney for it, but, you know, we. know, which vehicle was it? Who was driving it, so on and so forth.
Right.
Sometimes, it could be real obvious, you know, one motorcycle, and that's all I heard. But the speed system was going to be laser-based, which is, there's no error on that. It's not like radar, where you have to pick which vehicle's the speeder. Laser is that vehicle, and it was pretty accurate, and that still hasn't passed the legislature.
Right, which is interesting. But, so, our petition last year was a fee, right? It wasn't a citation that would appear on your record, and that's, that was kind of the lesser...
It's more of like, more of a city ordinance violation than a moving violation.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the state does use cameras to enforce tolls.
Tolls, yeah.
With cameras that...
And that is almost exactly a red light system.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Prozinski.
Thank you, Chair Varela. From experience, I just want to maybe inform some of the public and some of the counselors what has worked in the past and what hasn't. When I was on the police department, we worked closely with the motorcycles to try to lessen the noise, because Salem, Salem Willows became a gathering point for a lot of motorcycles. Motorcycle groups would travel into Salem, and they'd travel down Webb Street, and the people on Webb Street were constantly complaining about the noise. And Salem was kind of regarded in the motorcycle circles as a motorcycle-friendly community, whereas other communities like Newbury Port were completely against any alteration of any exhaust. And they were known, if you drove a motorcycle with an altered exhaust, you did not drive to Newbury Port, otherwise you're going to be in trouble. What the police did at that time was they put out a campaign and worked with the Massachusetts Motorcycle Association on the educational aspect of it, so as not to get some results by fining people, but by educating them. I know it was probably about a month-long program. We purchased decibel meters. We showed how those decibel meters are supposed to work, that you have to stand 15 feet away at a 45-degree angle at a certain level, and the motorcycle has to be revved up to a certain RPM, and you either have to be an engineer, or a scientist, or somebody. It makes it extremely difficult to try to use a decibel meter to use it as evidence, if you're not really, really, really know what you're doing, or certified maybe even. The answer to that really quickly was what Lieutenant Tucker said, was that any motorcycle that makes excessive noise has an altered exhaust. So, we were telling the people on the motorcycles, you want to come to Salem? That's fine, but don't drive with an altered exhaust, because you're going to get a fine. And that's a hefty fine. It's at least as much as it is for the harsh and objectionable noise violation. Not only that, but it's not a violation of the city ordinance. It's a violation of mass law, which means you get a citation for it, which means your insurance is going to go up. So, they don't want to get citations, because it's going to hit them, you know, double-handed. But like I said, it was an educational part of it, and it worked to quite a bit of an extent. The amount of noise reduction, also with enforcement on Webb Street, because I know that we did some selective enforcement on Webb Street, especially on weekend nights, did help curb it quite a bit. So, I guess maybe what I'm trying to say is that maybe it's, it could be time to revisit some kind of a educational part of it, reach out to the MMA again, and see, tell them that you want to work with the motorcycle groups to try to reduce the motorcycle noise, and see between the police department and them, what they can come up with for ideas. Some of the other things that worked back in the days was, I know that we're not supposed to be talking about the parties, but it is a noise issue. And I know that at one time, the Salem Police used to ride with the Salem State Campus Police in the same cruiser on weekends to address the loud houses. And that seemed to work. Also, Salem State College did, University did take a big step in enforcing their rules and regulations about off-campus conduct, which has helped quite a bit. But it hasn't, it hasn't ended it. So, I mean, that may be something that may want to be revisited again. It's nice that body cameras now can record exactly what the police are encountering when they go to these houses. It isn't a us versus them when it comes to a hearing in front of a clerk on exactly who saw what or who did what. That has helped quite a bit. Also, we hear a lot of ambulances and sirens coming in from Lynn on Highland Avenue and Jefferson Avenue. And I know that Chief Dion from the Fire Department has written letters to both the police chief and the fire chief in Lynn about asking them as much as possible to stem it, because if you, if you live anywhere near Highland Avenue, you know that going up and down Highland Avenue, it's a constant parade of sirens. And I know that they're actively working with the other communities to try to stem that. The last part of it is, and I'm going to tip my hat to Councilor Marcello on this, is I think we should be advocating more for red light cameras. I think that they would be tremendous in reducing the noise in areas such as Riley Plaza, where these good folks live. Red light cameras would hold people to stopping at their red lights, therefore, it would ripple effect, would be much less car honking and yelling and blocking of the intersection. I think it would be one positive step to do that. But that would be our job. It's not the police department, that lock isn't there yet, but it would be our job to advocate for the red light cameras. So, I strongly urge that we, as a council, support that initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Since we're on the subject, and I just wanted to really quickly, since we have Beth Renard here, is concerning the automated system that we could possibly propose, I was wondering, Beth, if you could quickly talk about the history of, 11 years ago, when the red light automated system was proposed, what happened? And if we were to do that again, would we be looking at the same instance? Is this something we should? How difficult is this going to be?
So, quickly, the redisgest version of what happened. So, years ago, many municipalities were approached by a company that was out of Florida that was doing red light cameras. And they approached the city of Salem, one of many. And we discovered through review of the law that Massachusetts state law really restricted the police officer's ability to use cameras to visibly see somebody going through a red light, because the state law requires that they actually see it to issue the citation. So, what we did was we filed a home rule petition, which is a bill that gets filed with the state legislature to allow a municipality to do something that's contrary to state law. It died. Years later, we filed another home rule petition to just do it in school zones. That died. It's difficult for the state legislature to enact laws that are unique to one city, because what that special act required was the DMV to be involved, to assist us in identifying the vehicles that, you know, the license plates and so on, and tapping into their system. So, it had an impact throughout the state. So, that's probably why it didn't succeed, and I suspect this might be similar.
Awesome. Thank you. And just to brush on that, if, let's say, red light cameras were allowed here in Salem, I think the benefit of that is there will be signage, warning signs stating to people, listen, if you're coming through this area, we do have documented cameras that will, you'll get an infraction. And I think that's more impactful than the actual cameras. So, with that, I know this, we'll continue this conversation. With that, I'm going to get to Councilor McLean, then Councilor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, Chair Varela. Very simple, Lieutenant Tucker. Can you share with us how many citations have actually been issued, say, in the last year or five years for noise violations from vehicles? And do you have a sense of whether, of what the breakdown would be between motorcycles versus, you know, loud stereos, et cetera?
I would have to dig into that and audit what we have. I don't have a report with me tonight on that, but I will, I will look into it. One fear I have is 9016 encompasses a lot of different violations under that, under 9016. So, it might be hard to single out which ones were loud stereos, which, you know, it could be loud exhaust, spinning tires, honking the horn. There are a bunch of different things that fall under that. So, I can't promise you that I'll be able to come up with hard numbers on the citations that we wrote for each specific one.
Sure, that's reasonable. But I think it would help to at least have an overall sense of how, of what the level of enforcement is in general for vehicles that are disturbing people for any reason, for noise.
Counselor Watsonfeld.
Thank you. Councilor McLean asked one of my questions. The second one is, what is the fee for the Chapter 9016 violation?
9016 is, it's a $50 fine, and then there's a $5 surcharge. That's across the board for most violations on 8990, so it's a $50 fine.
Thank you. The only other comment I was thinking about while we were having this conversation, specifically when, I believe it was Councilor Merkel brought up the pedestrian mall, is that there is an additional complication to this from a quality-of-life perspective, which is in the Washington Street, Riley Plaza, downtown Essex pedestrian mall, there are different kinds of noise. But what I'm observing is that there's an instance of loud noise, right? And then there are 20 to 50 instances of loud noise, all simultaneously happening for a duration of time. So, multiple car stereos, multiple engines, right, red lights, people honking, people blocking intersections, multiple musicians playing, you know, whether they're under the decibel requirement that is related to the pedestrian mall or not, there is this additive effect that affects the resident that, right, that lives there. I don't know what the solution is to sort of capture that sort of quality issue, or how you would enforce it. Because from where I sit, and I'm hoping you'll correct me in some way, but from where I sit, it's kind of like there's a bunch of individual violations, or maybe they're not violations individually, right, but combined, you now have a situation that's untenable. How do you address that? Or is that possible to address?
That would, I guess that would remain to be seen with increased enforcement. Typically, depending on what we're enforcing, you see improvements. So, if it's speeding, and we saturate a road and stop people for speeding, you usually see some improvement, and it's temporary. Once we, once we leave that area and move on to another issue, it will slowly return. So, it's a never-ending battle, unfortunately for us. And what you're describing is the noise of the city. We can, you know, the officers on patrol, or the officers monitoring an area can pick out the worst of the violators. And it will have some effect. I couldn't, you know, I'm not even sure how we would measure it. It would have some effect if if three vehicles had a loud stereo, and we stopped the loudest one, we'd like to think the other two people turned their radio down for fear of getting pulled over. So, it might have a overall effect. And like Councilor Prozinski was saying, you know, years ago, you didn't go to Newbury Port because you knew you were going to get stopped. That's a little different animal in terms of volume of people and everything. We're hoping that that, I hope the more that you see traffic units and other units enforcing motor vehicle laws, it'll have a beneficial effect. It's tough to say. We've been very aggressive with the hands-free law, enforcing that. It's hard to say if, you know, it's hard to measure that, whether how successful it is, because we're consistently catching people doing it. Anecdotally, one of the officers has stopped the same person three times. The same officer has stopped the same person three times, which we were baffled by. But, so, situations like that. But overall, I would like to think increased enforcement of any issue would have the positive result.
Thanks. I have one last question. City District Renard had, has told us the story of the red light cameras from 11 years ago. In your opinion, I know you and I have talked about technology on and off over the course of our one-year relationship. And we talk a lot about sort of, you know, license plate readers and the efficacy. So, would you say, in your opinion, that the technology has come far enough that we might actually have a chance at this a second time around, 11 years later?
I think the technology's there, in terms of the red lights, the speed. I think that technology is good. I think it's solid. It's just the will of the legislature at the state level needs to change, and maybe it will. As Councilor Prozinski also mentioned, I'm glad he did. I should have brought that up with body cameras. Depending on when you activate it, you might record the violation, and that's something we can try to incorporate. We haven't, we haven't really done it yet, but that footage, I do the motor vehicle hearings, the appeals, that footage possibly could be incorporated into that to say, you know, this is the, this is the violation. The problem, you know, it's a physical thing. Wearing the camera, you're not necessarily going to see the violation. We did pilot it, we pilot tested a dash cam that incorporated, that worked with that system. The system itself isn't quite ready yet, but that was unique, because you could see certain violations. You could see red light violations on it. It was pretty good.
Counselor Marcello.
Just a quick comment. I think probably every legislative session, somebody files a bill on enforcement through technology. And Rep. Cruz actually has one in. I think there's probably several, and then they'll try to combine them. It's all about advocacy, though. Like, we need to build up momentum from the entire state to get this through. And it takes time, and it takes a lot of phone calls. It takes a lot of people from all over the state to say that this was what we want. So, just putting that out there.
Thank you, Counselor Marcello. Beth?
If I may, Mayor Driscoll was very supportive of this initiative. We tried multiple times. Now that she is in the State House, it may be time. She may be listening to me.
I hear what you're picking up. I'm picking up what you're putting down.
Yeah, so, I suggest perhaps we can hear from the constituents about what their concerns are, and then we can incorporate that into, I'm happy to redraft the legislation, for sure.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Officer Tucker and Officer Burke. Appreciate your time on this. And with that, I'd like to open it up to public comment. So, whoever would like to step up, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm David Finger. I live at 26 New Derby Street. Can you hear me? Yeah. Really get, really get into it, really get into it. Okay. All right, great. Well, first of all, thank you very much for, you know, I know it's a lot of time and effort that goes into these sort of things. You know, noise pollution, again, is not just a nuisance, it is a hazard to health. Earlier this week, I sent you the 2022 UN report called Listening to Cities from Noisy Environments to Positive Soundscapes. It explains those negative health effects on the public. It also explains that noise pollution disproportionately impacts people, the poorer people within our communities. Here in Salem, I think it's pretty easy to visualize. Those with the ability can get a house on a quiet side street. Those poor families live in areas with high traffic density that comes with noise. Those kids go to school more sleep-deprived, more aggravated than their peers. By reducing noise pollution, you are all, you know, doing a service to that community. Also sent to you was examples through noisefree.org of cities that are taking action. There's different methods that they're doing it. Savannah, Georgia does, it's like, they do like speed traps, but they're sound traps. Some of what we kind of talked about earlier. Portland, Oregon has dedicated noise control police officers, so that they do really understand the ordinances and can better enforce them. And probably the biggest one that is going around is the use of technology. It's not only Philadelphia. Miami, Denver, Knoxville, Nashville, New York City are all using sound control cameras. Again, Miami, Denver, Knoxville, Nashville, New York City, Philadelphia, those are the ones I could find, are all using cameras. If you go to soundvue.com, S-O-U-N-D-V-U-E.com, that's the manufacturer of the cameras, you'll see exactly how it works. It's pretty, pretty cool if you watch it. I mean, there's a number of cameras that is triggered by the decibel level. You'll see the decibel level change as that motor vehicle is passing through, so that it's easier to detect. I'm sure you've sort of seen these things. But it's great to hear that there's some interest in going forward with that. in going forward with that. Yeah, I think the one thing that I would take away, Salem is a place with an audience. I think that's why a lot of these people do come here, throwing revs at the red light, really driving up, booming their stereo, because there's people here to listen to it, they're showing off. So it's not just, it is, and it is a few bad apples. Truly, I do, from sitting from our window, I can tell you without hearing, we all know the green Jeep that drives around town booming his stereo. I mean, I hear him three times a night. We know, you know, you can tell the V12 Mercedes that lives at the Willows that has an illegal exhaust. We know that there are, you know, a couple of motorcycles, I think they're Hells Angels from Lynn, or whatever, but, you know, there's a couple that will come through. I think that if you do enforce and have some sort of, yeah, if you do enforce, then you will sort of set the precedent in correct behavior. So again, thank you very much, and appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Finger, and thank you for your advocacy on this and all the materials you've provided. As you will probably note in the shared drive, there are a lot of materials that Mr. Finger has provided us, so thank you for that. Please, thank you, say your name and address.
Lori, 38 Essex Street. I am a previous environment to health and safety manager, seven years of a composite material manufacturing plant, and I have a little cold thing going on, so please excuse my voice, and thank you guys for showing up. Appreciate everything you do. I, despite you wanting to keep this to motorcycles and green Jeeps and things like that, I have an issue with the street performers from Hawthorne to Washington Street, and we have regulations, and it's got the 65 to 78 decibel limits based on the area of Essex Street. And I know that they're supposed to get a license, and I know there's an additional permit that they can get for sound amplification, and there's fewer than a dozen, I'd say, street performers, most of whom I think are great, and they're abiding by or very close to within reasonable limits of the noise asymmetry type levels. However, there are a few that, despite approaching them, complimenting their singing voices, and politely asking them to turn down the music, repeatedly, there's one person in particular who laughs in your face, I say, I'm going to call the police, and they say, go ahead, there's nothing they can do. And I would like to know two things. One, what is the process in place as a citizen who likes to do a lot of walking, who's accosted by, it's the sound amplification mostly, because the drummers, I'm a former drummer, they're not even as loud as these sound amplification devices, and as the health officer can also attest to, some of the time-weighted average of this amplified decibel usage, for those of us who might be hanging out on Essex Street, it is damaging to the ears. The higher it goes, or the longer it goes, the more damaging it is. And again, most of the street performers are great, but because of the repeated pushback I've received, I want to know, who do I call? What do I say? And the weird kind of a side note, which I'm sure you're all going to say no to, but during COVID, we had volunteer people with orange vests that were going around saying, you might have forgotten to put on your mask. Is there any kind of a volunteer group? Because you can get noise asymmetry apps for free, like Sound Meter on your phone. They're not quite as accurate, they're pretty accurate, not quite as accurate. There's a whole big regulation that goes in to approved noise disimeters, but what do you do when you repeatedly come across a street performer? I have called the police a few times, but as time ticks closer to October, they have way more important things to do. And I'm thinking, if you can bring the process back, can you say, hey, street performer, you have to show your license, and it shows your name, and then, hey, street performer, you have to show that you've got the sound amplification permit? And if they don't, then does that bump you higher in the list of getting a response? And it just, what do you do? What's the process to, because I can tell you, walking from where I live, down by Ziggy's Donuts, by the time I'm approaching the Hawthorne Hotel, there's this one guy in particular, and again, as time ticks on, that ambient noise is louder and louder, but it's still, ironically, we're in a sound meeting here. It's okay. So anyway, approaching, you know, approaching Hawthorne Street, there's this one person in particular that, he is blasting, and his voice isn't even that bad, really, he's kind of a good singer, but he's just, he's so loud, and I have begged him to turn it down, and he'll make a motion that he's turning it down, but he's not turning it down. And then I'll try to explain, falling on deaf ears, pardon the pun, the noise asymmetry, the decibel levels, what's legal, what's healthy, what's unhealthy, how he's hurting himself, and it just, he doesn't want anything to do with it. So I'm just looking for direction on what do you do? And some of these street performers now, it's just not a mid-September to late October thing, now they're showing up during holiday weekends and things. So it's trickling into more of everyday life and just, and it's gotten to that it's, some of these people are so loud that I will detour where I'm going, walk parallel, and then get back onto Essex Street, because it is accosting. It's just too loud, it's ridiculous, so, and my dog, I don't want my dog being damaged by it either, so what do you do? Who do you call? What do you enforce? How do you stop it?
Thank you for your comment. With that, I will entertain if, Lieutenant Tucker, if you'd like to answer that, or Captain Burke, or Beth, please.
I think I should take it. Long story. So years ago, we would license our street performers, we had a no amplification ordinance, a requirement under our regulations. We were recently sued by the ACLU for violating street performers' First Amendment rights. We worked with the ACLU to get that case dismissed, and so, as you know, we have an ordinance now that sets decibel limits in certain areas. So in meeting with the police, we have a Halloween task force, and in meeting with the police last week, we are going to revisit our ordinance relative to noise and amplification by street performers, so we can control time, place, and manner. So the time, they're supposed to stop at 8 o'clock. The place, we can't exclude all areas, but we can make some more restrictive than others. There needs to be an alternative way for performers to sing, dance, jog, you know, do the jig, whatever it might be. So it's time, place, and manner. So we are revisiting that, our ordinance, to put more teeth into it for the police and to make it more easy for them to enforce, because we have, as you know, I think you know, some of our areas are more restrictive than others. So it's something that we're evaluating, we understand your concerns, we have them too. My office is here at City Hall, and they sit outside of my office and play the clarinet most days in October, so I have empathy for you. So we're looking at it, and it's something that's on top of our to-do list for the next few weeks, a month, to get something back before the city council, so they give the police a little bit more teeth, but that is still constitutional, time, place, and manner restrictions.
If they don't have a noise amplification, which is the main issue, a noise amplification permit, are they still allowed to perform?
So the basis of the case was the permitting. We're not allowed to permit First Amendment right, so we don't issue permits anymore.
Oh, man. And noise amplification permits, or street performer permits, or both?
Well, there was only one, and there was only one permit, and some allowed amplification in certain zones, but we don't do either at this point in time.
So I wonder if that's the reason why this guy laughed at me, because he knew there was nothing that could be done?
Most likely. If you want to call me offline, we can discuss it in further detail.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, anyone in Zoom land would like to make a public comment? Please raise your hand, and we'll get to you. Okay, no one in Zoom land. Anyone else from the council that can make a comment? Counselor Cohen? Nope? Wait, wait, sorry. I'd like to say one more thing. I understand probably the will is going to be putting this in committee. I just want to put on the record that I think it's important that, not only do we continue this discussion, but I think it's worthwhile to file a home rule petition for this type of technology. I think it's important, it's a quality of life issue, and it's absolutely worth a shot. So with that, Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Varela. So it sounds like you're going to be writing this petition that we can consider. And with that, I want to thank people in the public on behalf of the committee and all the, our guests that came in, and I move that we keep this in committee.
Second?
All right, second by Counselor Watson felt. Do we need to take a roll call vote? No. All right, all in favor of keeping this in committee? Let the record show, I see four hands, plus my own. The matter carries. Can I get another motion? Motion adjourned by Counselor Merkel, seconded by Counselor Watson felt. Thank you, everybody, meeting is adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, let's vote, all those in favor of adjourn the meeting. Let the record show, I see four hands, plus my own, meeting adjourned, thank you.